Please be seated, councillors. Can I welcome you all to this Redcar in Cleveland Borough Council on Thursday the 12th of January 2023? Please can I ask you all to switch your mobile phones off or play some on silence, please? It is with great sadness that I have to announce the death of Raymond Collins. Raymond was employed in waste services as a refuse loader and driver. He started his employment with the council on the 9th of June 1981. He was sixty-four years old. Our thoughts are with his family and friends. Would members please join me in a minute's silence as a mark of respect? Thank you, councillors, please be seated. Our first agenda item is apologies for absence, and I've received apologies from councillor Ayer, Berry, Clark, Fisher, Griffiths, Hickson, Jones, C Holmes, Moody, Quatermain and Westbury, sorry, and Wilson. Do we have any other apologies? Thank you, councillor Hunt.
Hello, Richardson.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor Lee Holmes, thank you. Okay, thank you, councillor King. Item two is to receive declarations of interest. The declarations of interest forms will be on your desk. Please complete if you have any declarations of interests. Item three is to confirm the accuracy of the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of November 2022. Can someone move them, please? Thank you, councillor Smith.
Can I confirm that, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Item four is to note the attendance matrix. Noted. Item five is to receive any announcements from the mayor, the leader of the council or cabinet members. I have a number of announcements. Firstly, I would like to wish everybody a happy and healthy 2023. I would like to welcome to the council the new Conservative councillor, Paul Savin, who won the recent Normve election. Welcome. And also the new executive director for Growth Enterprise and Environment, Mr Brian Archer. Welcome, Brian. I would also like to welcome Henry Wayne, who is the youth parliament member for this area, who is sitting in and observing our meeting today. Despite the cold, I did take part in the Boxing Day Dip in Redcar and managed to raise 1,250 and it's still going up for my two chows, who's the Great North Air Ambulance and Teesside Hospice. Thank you to everybody for your kind support and donations. Thank you, and it was very cold. I have received a card from King Charles thanking the council for the condolence letter sent for the late Queen Elizabeth II. It reads, "It was so very kind of you to send me such a wonderful generous message following the death of my beloved mother. Your most thoughtful words and enormously comforting, and I cannot tell you how deeply they are appreciated at this time of immense sorrow." That is the end of my announcements. Councillor Lanigan, do you have any announcements? And I understand you've got a knee injury, so I will give you dispensation from standing on this occasion.
Mr Mayor. I would also like to welcome councillor Paul Savin. It's lovely to see you here and well done for getting elected. I would also like to congratulate our health visiting and school nursing services, which received a good rating during a recent inspection. Inspectors from care quality commissions spoke to staff, patients, partner organisations and gave good ratings across all five key areas of the service. The CQC said our staff treated children and young people and their families with compassion and kindness. Everyone involved deserves great credit for everything they do and we should be very proud of what they've achieved. It's been a long and difficult process for the council to get control of the Redcar Central Station building, but we are now seeing some progress being made. Plan permission was granted for the major redevelopment of the building, meaning it will now be restored to its former glory. We expect work to start this spring to transform it into the welcoming gateway into the town. Plans to make our borough greener by planting more than nineteen thousand trees are going ahead. This adds to the four thousand trees planted last winter to increase biodiversity in the area and support the council's ambition to become carbon neutral by 2030. Our staff once again have protected the public by successfully prosecuting the sold trader, who carried out some substantiated work and took deposits but failed to complete any assignments. The trader did admit fraud and unfair trading and given a suspended prison sentence and ordered to pay compensation to the victims. This was first-class work done by Trading Standards Team to resolve cases like these, which have brought huge stress to a lot of families. Members, I just want to explain a few things, what's happened and given what's been going out on Facebook and in the press recently. Cabinet actually met in December and the new car parking charges came to the fore, which was proposed by our officers to go out for consultation. I have to tell you, this was rejected by Cabinet and where we are at the moment, and I just want to tell you where we are. The Redcar in Cleveland have now decided, Cabinet, have removed all new parker, new parking charges from its budget proposals for 2023-24. We've done this in conjunction because what's actually happened is, because it went out of consultation, we've had a lot of the public come in to us to say, "Please don't do this." But I do have to tell you, councillor, because where we are at the moment, the reason for the consultation was to allow residents and businesses to have their say, which right across the board, we always do that, no matter which political party you're from. And of course, with all the replies, and that's why we've done it. And nobody wants to bring in charges like this. But we had no choice. And I think that the officers felt that it needed to be consulted out there, and that's why it went out, even though Cabinet was against that, because we did feel that that was going to impact on a lot of things that were going on out there. So the government talked about a nine percent increase that have gone to the local authorities. This is not true. When we got this the other day, we're actually more than nearly £2 million down to what the Chancellor actually said. That figure is dependent, central government telling us, on council tax bills going up by five percent. Since 2010, we've had to actually find savings of £100 million, and that's across all parties, the last administration as well as this one going forward. And as a result, we've lost more than a thousand staff. This year, with inflation and demand for services, we've been left with a 9.5 million shortfall. And it's a legal duty, we've got to produce a balanced budget going forward. So we've got to make some palatable decisions, and council are going to do that. And we're re-looking at everything that we're doing at the moment. So what we've decided, having a meeting with Cabinet going forward, to exclude all new parking charges from the proposals, and of course, this will come to council, and proposed increases, parking permits, bulky waste, placement bins and charging for using toilets. And I know you sat here and you're thinking that this is a political statement. It isn't that, and I've spoken to the mayor about this. And because of the controversy that's been going on out there and council has been actually inundated with what's been said, I thought it needed to be made absolutely clear, this is where we are with this going forward. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Before I move on for any cabinet members' reports or messages, I'm going to allow councillor Brown to speak in relation to what has been said by councillor Lanigan on the parking. Please keep it brief, we're not having a debate. Just allow you to make any comments. Also, if the Conservative Party wish to make any comments in relation to it, I'll allow that as well.
Thank you for the update, Mary. However, I completely have to disagree with what you've just said about the cabinet rejecting the car parking fees back in December. That's not what happened at all. Excuse me, councillor Langley Gill, I'm speaking, not you. I was chair of resources, spoke to the cabinet and give back lots of feedback from what came from the scrutiny. Mary, I rang you the night before as well and told you exactly what we discussed in the Labour group. Sue Jeffrey and a number of the other Labour councillors absolutely dissected everything Phil Wilton Stanley said to us in a presentation the night before. The cabinet decision was to defer to January and then put it out to consultation. The cabinet did not reject it in December, as Chris Massey and other witnesses there would say. So what we said on social media and even the Conservative group, what they did in calling for the park fees to be looked at was not incorrect and it was not misinformation, and I thank the mayor for letting us put the record straight.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have stated, any group leader may wish to speak on this. Conservative Party?
Yeah, I think if that is correct and it was rejected, there should be some kind of written explanation to why this has happened. It's caused a lot of upset for our community. I would like to see it in writing exactly what did happen.
Sorry, I'm not going to allow you to speak. I'm not going to have a debate. I'm just giving them the opportunity to reply to what Mary has said. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to add further to what councillor Brown has intimated. Certainly, the chairs of scrutiny who did attend the cabinet meeting in December did convey that discussions at the relevant scrutiny committees had evidence of concern and that concern ranged across the fees and charges, not simply on parking, where the inflationary uplift, which was anticipated to be across the board, was coming in at twenty percent, thirty percent, one hundred percent in some instances for fees and charges. And that was deemed to be unreasonable without further consultation. My recollection is that the cabinet meeting in December did agree to defer a decision for further consultation that would take place during the beginning of this calendar year. And that, I think, should be on record.
Councillor Watts, I see you've indicated, right, and I'm going several ones. I've done this out of being transparent for all to make a comment. You aren't a group leader, but you are independent, independent. I will allow one person to speak from the independent, independent group. And you were first, so you will be the last speaker and we'll move on with business.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm just very grateful to councillor Lanigan for clarifying this point because it has caused a lot of upset. I certainly have had a lot of phone calls about this. Given the confusion that is out there, could this council put out a statement to the effect that this is not going ahead at the moment?
Councillor Lanigan, allow you to have a final say.
And actually, whatever confusion has gone on with this, it did go back to Cabinet. It was deferred going forward with us, and I can absolutely assure you, a full statement will be going out to let the public know. This isn't about this administration sat over here. This is about all of us sat here. We've got some really, really difficult decisions to make going forward. And the £100 million that I've actually explained to you over the last decade that this council has lost through central government, for whatever reason it is, we are here to look after the public and children's services, you're all well aware, and adult services. We are running into millions of pounds of deficit.
Councillor Lanigan, allow you to co-
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the agenda. Sorry, sorry.
Please tell me the process by which we are now going to approve the review, the renewed or the revised fees and charges. So will they please be considered and agreed or not agreed or whatever's going to happen at the budget meeting? Is that what's going to happen? Because if it is, then councillor Lanigan can't say that they've been rejected or not rejected. It will be a decision of this council.
Thank you. Right, we're going to move on. Councillor Lanigan said yes?
It was a cabinet decision to do this. It's coming back to full council. Full council will have a full say on what this is going forward. This is going to be the recommendation coming in from Cabinet.
Okay. I'm going to stop the debate now. I was quite lenient in allowing this to go on. I'm going to hold it now and we're going to get back to the agenda items. Cabinet members, do we have any announcements? Councillor Foggo?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a request to members. The Members Inquiry System is a good system for getting action on your problems in your wards. But recently, we've been getting quite a few emails to directors and assistant directors asking for minor issues to be looked at, which means that they have to take time then to pass it on to the correct officer. Can I request that you actually use the Members Inquiry System, please?
Thank you. Any other cabinet members wish to make any announcements? Okay, thank you. I'll move on to item six. You may see that we've joined this afternoon by the corporate director for Adult and Communities, Mr Patrick Rice, who's standing in for the managing director, John Sampson, who is unwell. Do you have any announcements, Patrick?
I do not, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Okay, big lead up and then no. Item seven, and we've had no questions received from the public. Item eight is reports, and the report today is from councillor Barnes, who will be giving the report on children in our care and care leavers, an update report. Councillor Barnes?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As usual, this report is to update members of the council about the work undertaken by the Children and Family Services in respect of children in our care and care leavers. This is for the second quarter, which includes July, August and September 2022. The report should be read in conjunction with appendix one. And can I please apologize to members that there was some confusion about this appendix? And in fact, a previous one was submitted initially with your papers. The correct one has been circulated via email. In actual fact, the difference, the tables were in fact correct, but some of the narrative underneath was not one hundred percent accurate. And as I say, I do apologize for that. The fostering team have had twelve initial inquiries in the second quarter of 2022, and there are seven fostering households due to its ten skills to foster training and ten initial assessments ongoing. Foster carer recruitment continues to be a priority and our fostering Facebook page is continuing to be used as a platform to promote the service. In addition, the teams have been invited to be interviewed on BBC Tees Radio. Family and friends assessments has been an area of increased demand, and there were fourteen carers temporarily approved between April to June and twenty carers from July to September. The first Mockingbird constellation went live at the start of September 2022. We have six families as part of the constellation and two more that we are currently talking to about whether they would wish to be part of this. The families within the constellation have all signed up to a nurturing attachments programme, which is eighteen weeks long, so quite an investment on their part. The aim of this is to upskill the foster carers so that the children will receive a consistent response, which will help them to feel safe and secure. During quarter two, we've supported up to nineteen unaccompanied young people in our care and thirty-seven unaccompanied care leavers. Five young people received the right to remain during the quarter. We reported in quarter one that there were two missing unaccompanied young people. This is now reduced to one, after a young person who had been missing was located by the police and returned to our care. At a recent regional asylum-seeking forum, the good practice of the team was recognised, which was very pleasing. The manager has forged a reputation regionally as an expert and offered support, guidance and advice to other local authorities. Within quarter two, there were 161 care leavers accessing support, 124 of whom were being supported by Target, our leaving care team, and 37 by our unaccompanied asylum-seeking team. Thirty-six care leavers were over the age of 21. From the 161 care leavers opened within quarter two, 103 were engaged in education, employment and training, with 58 who are not accessing any EET. We have secured four places for young people on the mentoring programme, which we hope will help their transition to employment or training. To support future work, an officer has been to several meetings with key agencies to discuss training and employment opportunities, including Teeswork Skills Academy, Triage, Grangetown Hub and Middlesbrough College Adult Learning. The Leaving Care Service has set up a care experience forum that provides a space for young people to come together and discuss their needs and experiences and provide mutual support for each other. A group of 10 care experienced young people attended an overnight residential on the 7th and 8th of September at Carlton Lodge. The purpose was to develop relationships with one another and agree a plan of work to raise awareness of pertinent issues affecting them. In summer 2022, GCSEs returned to the previously externally marked examination. From our year eleven cohort of 25 pupils, only three did not receive any external examinations. One was a young person who attends a special school and two young people did not attend their examinations. By the end of the academic year, the overall school attendance of the virtual school statutory aged cohort rose by over 4.68 percent, from 86.90 in 2021 to 91.58 percent in 2122. There were increases across all key stages, especially for key stages three and four, where there has been intensive work. Redcar in Cleveland were almost three percent higher than the estimated national average, and we had less authorised and unauthorised absence. The virtual school is still concerned about learning time lost due to the number of suspensions. By the end of the academic year, a total of 30 pupils received at least one suspension in 2021, that's 10 percent of the cohort. The number of pupils receiving suspensions remained the same as the previous year. However, the number of days these 30 pupils were suspended for increased significantly from the previous year, from 212.5 days in 2021 to 326.5 days in 2122. owing to these rise, bespoke interventions and strategies were implemented by the virtual school in partnership with our schools and an extensive and enhanced training offer was provided. By the summer of 2022, this was beginning to have an effect and there was a reduction in the number of days suspension for each term consecutively, showing the positive impact of these interventions for both individual pupils and school staff. At the end of quarter two, the service reported 23 children as active to our vulnerable, missing, exploited and trafficked procedures, with nine of these children being in our care. There are increasing worries about the escalation in the number of children who are being exploited and the incidence of serious violence in our borough. This impact on our children and young people, who are both victims of serious injury and increasingly carry weapons to inflict injury on others. We submitted a bid to work with Professor Carleen Furman from Durham University, who is an expert in contextual safeguarding and the Department of Education, to develop a pathway for engaging with children and families when there is a risk outside of the family home, roth. We were successful and are one of only three local authorities in the whole country to have been selected. Our No Wrong Door Hub has continued to offer a robust edge of care service, supporting 53 young people in quarter two, compared to 48 in the previous quarter. The work is mostly helping children to remain in the family home or in supporting plans for reunification. Our Ofsted registration is progressing with a visit to inspect the hub and interviews taking place last week. Successful registration will enable our residential element of the No Wrong Door approach to be implemented. On appendix one, you will find the tables relating to the number of children in our care, the children in care in the placement categories, the number of children placed within Redcar in Cleveland and outside of the borough, the categories of children in care, which once again show a majority of children under the age of three years old, the children in our care subject to exploitation and a breakdown of the children in our care. I'd like to commend the report to the council, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. Do I have a second for that report, please? Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Councillors who wish to speak or ask questions? I have a couple at the moment. Can I remind them that this is not a debate? It is a debate technically, sorry, but councillor Barnes will answer the query or question at the end of all the councillors speaking. So my first councillor is councillor Watts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am a bit concerned reading this. It's, it's full of good news, good news, good news for children in our care, for expanding the range of what they're doing. I don't see anything about any restrictions that have been put on the department in the light of our budget problems. And I think, I know we have a statutory duty, but we don't have an open chequebook and every year there is tremendous money going in and in and in. I was wondering if the department could give us sort of more overall view of the situations of that department. It needs looking at the balance between the statutory role and the non-statutory role because we have children who are very vulnerable, at risk and need our care. But the level of expenses and opportunities we are giving to them is now out of proportion to what our residents' families can actually afford. Our residents are going more and more to food banks. They're going to warm centres for heat. They can't afford the mortgage increase. They see children in care going off on trips and other extras. I'm not saying don't do this. What I'm wondering if the department can look at such as these trips and the experiences they get, combining resident children with children in our care and for this to take place at our hubs so that the residents in that area can participate in this. I think it would give the opportunities to a wider range of children and possibly reduce some of the costings. So I'm just suggesting that that can be looked at.
Thank you, councillor Watts. Councillor Halloway?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor Barnes. On the subject of family and friends, foster carers, I've seen the report that there were, I think, 34 approved in a six-month period. And obviously, that, that's quite a high number, so it's good work for the panel, you know, obviously worked very fast. I just wondered, is this a choice, you know, a strategy to move more in the direction? Or is it to some extent managing a situation that we don't have that much control over? If the courts are already putting the children with those family and friends? Obviously, it's, it's a much disputed area of foster caring because they become carers by circumstance, you know, and then we approve them, which is a different thing from training your foster carers and then, you know, putting a child in placement with them. So I just wondered, is that, is that a choice that we're making to do that? I also wanted to ask about the, the leavers, the care leavers who are NEETS, because it says in the report that there are 58 NEETS, which is roughly a third of those care leavers who were in quarter two. It would be interesting to know if some of them have started a placement or a job or some kind of training and have dropped out of it. In other words, is the issue engaging them in the first place? Or is it working with the placements that they're in to try and retain them? Thank you.
I have no more councillors wishing to speak, so councillor Barnes, can you sum up, please?
Councillor Watts, you're absolutely right that obviously children and families is subject to the restrictions of the budget and same as everyone else. I really don't think that the report which I give each, every 12 weeks is the the forum for actually discussing that. If you would, I, I have received from the department, a number of suggestions and a number of areas which we are trying to reduce the, the cost to the, to the department. The vast majority of our services, as you pointed out, are statutory. And I'm not sure whether what you're saying is correct, to be perfectly honest, whether in fact children who are in care do get additional extra treatment and it's preferential. I acknowledge that the, the children in our care and their foster carers were taken to the Regent for, to see a film over the Christmas period. And I also acknowledge that in, I think it was September, there was a garden party, for want of a better term, which councillor King and I attended. I think it's very important for children who are in care to have a sense of worth. And part of that comes from being able to be with other children who are in care and to, to compare their experiences and to try and make them feel part of a family environment. And obviously, families do take their children out to special events. Now, what you're saying, I think, is the fact that because of the increased cost of living, a number of families are not able to do that. Well, I appreciate that too. But I don't really think it's equitable that because some families have not been able to do that, that this should necessarily impact upon children in our care who have got all sorts of other disadvantages linked to their situation. Right, councillor Halloway? Family and friends, I think some of them, yes, they do end up in that situation through circumstances as opposed to choice. However, on the, on the, when we, we sit on the fostering panel, we are at great lengths to make sure that although they may be put into those circumstances, that they are willing to do it and don't feel that they have to do it because of guilt or anything else. So it is a question that is always asked of them to make sure that they are absolutely certain that that is what they want to do. In fact, a, a recent one that I, a panel that I sat on, it was in fact turned down because it was felt that the individual concerned had been manoeuvred into that situation. It was a friends one, it wasn't a family one. And the circumstances were very complex, but in fact, the panel decided to actually turn down the application. Obviously, as you know, we also tried in, in these circumstances to not only, to, well, to ensure that people who actually are, become foster carers through friends and family also attend the training and regularly reviewed and everything else. And also ultimately, we do try and persuade friends and family to, as you know, accept a special guardianship order so that they are then, have parental authority. In terms of our NEET people, I think I'd probably say it's both. Some of them did start placements and have dropped out. I think, I know everybody blames everything on Covid and the lockdown and everything else, but actually that does have a huge effect on people and is still having an effect because if you are a care leaver, the likelihood is that you are going to live by yourself. And so therefore, the stresses and strains that lockdown put upon all of us are exacerbated, I would suggest, if you are living alone and not able to, to, to socialise with your friends. So yes, I think some of them started placements and dropped out because they couldn't cope. In terms of engaging with the placements, we do have a dedicated NEET officer who is actually doing that. And I think that the, the, the relationship has improved between the council and some of these providers. It remains to be seen whether that will continue in the future, but it is obviously a very sort of complex subject.
Thank you, councillor Barnes, for your report. Councillor, do I have general acceptance of councillor Barnes's report? Okay, thank you. Item nine is to receive reports from portfolio holders. And this afternoon, we are having the report of, for adults, which is going to be provided by councillor Ovens. Councillor Ovens?
Thank you. I have done my very best to condense this, which I hope people have had a chance to read. And I will do my best, as I said, to do that because often the topics and areas we're looking at are so interlinked. However, I would like to read the first few pages, which I think set the tone for it. I hope this report truly reflects the work of everyone who helps in any way to provide adult services. This is my fourth year as Cabinet Member for Adults and it has been another extremely challenging year for all of us. I thank Patrick Rice and Victoria Wilson for all their hard work and direction. And Victoria in particular, in the preparation and writing of this report. With all the information that she provides, there would be no report. I will start by saying how enormously grateful I am to every individual working in the social care sector, regardless of role. You've been amazing throughout this very difficult period. And because of your commitment, many people at the heart of our health and care system are safe and well. It'll be a difficult road forward, but I know you are doing your best to support adults, unpaid carers and each other in our joint ambition to serve people and empower them to have the best possible lives. I think that's important that we've kept people safe. We are still trying to provide the very best possible life they can have. The road to recovery will not be straightforward, but I know you are doing your best. Sorry, moving on to reflections. When I was preparing to write this report, I reflected much of the focus of the last 12 months has been to consolidate positive developments arising out of this global public health emergency. This included collaboration across the social care sector to mitigate negative impacts on the lives of individuals, families and the social care staff who work tirelessly to support people, their carers and each other. It will indeed be a long and hard road ahead and we still have the effects of the variants of Covid plus this rotten influenza that's around at the moment. It says in 2.3, "Social work has always been at its best in dealing with uncertainty, ambiguity and crisis." But we are indeed in the worst of times. I have been humbled throughout my four years as Cabinet Member for Adults. By the efforts everyone has made to manage so many challenges and so much uncertainty, many thanks to all of you who have worked tirelessly during the most difficult of times and who stepped to ensure the adult social care response was the best it could be during such an unprecedented period. As we recover and grapple with the challenges and the new normal, the challenge for adult social care is to take a big leap forward by redesigning and reimagining practice, working alongside people, their carers and the communities in which they live, to be ambitious for the best possible lives and outcomes for all. However, with the number of vacancies across the adult social care service, the commissioned care sector and the increasing demand driven by the cost of living crisis, this will be no moon feet. And you will see these are the areas that we come back to repeatedly throughout the report. If we move on to the distinct headings, I did try to select a few to home in on, but they're all so interlinked that I felt that was virtually impossible. So if we can start with community, and all I can really say is that without the community out there looking out for people and providing services, it would be a very different picture. I am in particular grateful to, you know, all the organisations who are out there looking after our, particularly the isolated people, who are making sure they're warm. And it is often down to us sometimes, every person, every resident, just to offer a smile, a kind word or a helping hand, which is no cost. However, one of my friends, who unfortunately was on her own over Christmas, said to me, she called me while I was out shopping and said, "Oh, your services are wonderful" because I was going to be on my own till I was invited for a Christmas lunch. It just happened to be in Mask, but I do know that similar events occurred throughout the borough. So anyone who was involved in that community type of work, I thank from the bottom of my heart. Cost of living, well, I don't think I need to dwell on that too long. We all know the impact it is having on everybody and the impact it has on the most vulnerable. We have put strategies in place with a 30-point plan, which can be accessed. And we are concentrating really on warm and well and we have all the warm spaces throughout. Again, that's often provided by the voluntary sector. Then if I move on to crisis in our care sector, I don't think you have to turn the television on and listen to the radio to know that we've got a massive crisis. We've got the crisis between the link between the NHS and the care system and the whole big picture. Successful governments haven't managed to mend it. It, it keeps getting shelved and put back in back. Yes, we do get various grants through. But it's a little bit, it brings to mind the sticking plaster approach. We need somebody to grasp this nettle and get on and do a joint seamless service. As we can see at 2.14, they are in increasing vacancies. And even if you were able to have the funds to cover those vacancies, the people aren't out there. So it's a very difficult time. If I move on to swiftly to 2.16, in my last annual report, I described how the government had pledged 500 million funding to support workforce capacity and capability. It was redesigned to reduce the barriers to integrated working. However, it hasn't really come to fruition and the events of the time with the demands on discharge from hospital are overwhelming people. It seemed to work reasonably well during the Covid lockdown period and people, carers and everyone else was being clapped alongside the NHS. But that sadly seems to have disappeared. This is just in my humble opinion. What we do need is to have some seamless system that sees our health journey almost from birth touching in on the children's services all the way through when it will happen to many of us, unfortunately, that we will need medical interventions. We then need to be discharged somewhere. It has to be seen as a seamless continuum. And I just read a report recently which described exactly that, where you come into care, whether it's in a home, whether it's in sheltered accommodation, whether it's with domiciliary care. where you come into care, whether it's in a home, whether it's in sheltered accommodation, whether it's with domiciliary care. And then sadly for men, maybe, possibly not many, I might be exaggerating here, some people will go on to an end-of-life pathway. And till we get that concept of continuing health care and health needs throughout a person's life, you know, we're fragmented. Sorry. Right, if I move on to partnership working on page five. I think we've already mentioned that, you know, without all of our partners, it would be extremely difficult. And having said all that about care as not being served value maybe as NHS, we do have excellent partners with our NHS teams. It just needs to have a little more parity, and that's all going to come about by making care seen as a more worthwhile career pathway. Just yesterday, I was up in Gisborough, standing on a very muddy field at the launch of a scheme for assisted living. It hadn't got a brick laid, but that's already making the plans for 24, 25. It was a true delight to be sucked in by the mud. So all I can say is we continue to need our partners, but it's got to be that close working relationship. Managing demand in adult social care. I think these themes, that theme has already been touched on, and said everything is interlinked, isn't it? But it has a massive impact across the service. And actions are in place to prioritise. And sometimes we're having to prioritise people in a way that we would not necessarily want to do in an ideal world. But we don't live in an ideal world, and we've got to deal with what comes before us. If we move on to 2.27. The performance information available for us shows we are heading for an increased outcome in activity for 2022, 23, across all activities in adult social care, including contacts, referrals, deprivation of liberty safeguards, safeguarding mental health, act assessments, and demand for occupational therapy. These are all increasing pressures and demand on our staff, who, you know, have risen to the challenge in a remarkable way. We're also challenged by carrying vacancies and at times having a recruitment freeze, which I think is in reverse. So there are key positions that we need to fill. It always goes back to this nutty question of finance, doesn't it? One of the big issues on the horizon last year, well, it's gone, it was on the horizon for 23, is the care quality commission assurance of adult social care. This has been an immense piece of work, taking up significant time. But I think we feel we are in a good position. And we will shortly have a peer review sometime this, I'm not quite sure the exact date, but I'm sure we'll get the outcome from that in due course. That's one of the bigger issues, and it's really looking at it almost a different way of working, a different way of assessing.
Councillor Ovens?
Yes?
I do apologise for interrupting you. But to be fair to previous cabinet portfolio holders?
Yeah.
We'll give them the report.
I have.
You're way over your 10 minutes.
Sorry, I have to, all I, I was just going to go on to say.
Okay, I'll allow you to go on, but just to remind you.
Few minutes, achieve, everyone can read the achievements. Despite all those problems and demands, we have had significant achievements over the year, which you can all see. And if I can. Sorry. If I can go on very, very swiftly to my conclusions, if I may, if you will indulge me. My last four years as Cabinet Member has seen adult social care and our communities deal with multiple and extreme challenges. Firstly, we had a cyber attack, quickly followed by the pandemic. And, you know, we were thrown into the biggest crisis seen for generations. There are significant challenges ahead. However, I would like to thank my fellow councillors for the support and proactive member involvement at Adults and Community Scrutiny and Improvement Committee over the last four years. You've continued to support and contribute and support the work that we do for our vulnerable residents. It's very much appreciated, and I know this will continue. And I'd like in particular to thank Sheila. And very lastly, if I may, I would like to pay tribute to David Walsh, former leader of Redcar and Cleveland Council and Cabinet Member for Adults, who sadly passed away in July this year. I wasn't able to attend his funeral, I wasn't here at the time. But, you know, the funeral itself told how much esteem he was held in. He was a strong advocate for people with care and support needs and a passionate public servant who dedicated his life to serving others. And I think that is what I hope we all do, and that's certainly what adult services do. They almost give their lives for the people out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Ovens. There will be, yes, there is. And can I remind councillors, it is a question and answer session. 10 minutes are set aside for these questions. So councillors, can I ask, as always, that your questions are succinct and relate directly to matters within councillor Ovens's report? And our first councillor is councillor Watts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much for what I found was an informative but realistic report, what we can do and what we can't do. There's just one point that I think is worth exploring. In other parts of the country, the health authority is actually buying beds in empty buildings to discharge people from hospital. People who will be going home but aren't quite ready to go home because they need occupational therapy physio. I was thinking of a building, I mean, in Gisborough, we have the old maternity hospital, which is still owned by the health authority, but I don't know what goes on in there. It's straight opposite of the Gisborough Hospital, or Clinic as I call it, where the physios and the therapy and everybody hang out. And I would think that if that could be set up with extra beds, I know staffing is a problem, but they wouldn't need that intensive staffing that you need in hospital. It would release the hospital staff, release beds in the hospital, and you would have the physios and the therapists on hand to spend most of their time in and around that ward. And it would get them rid of some of the backlog. There are pros and cons with it.
Councillor Watts, is there a question here?
Yes, if we could look into that, because it is being experimented with in other areas. And I do think it's an area worth considering.
Councillor Ovens?
You said if it's still owned by the NHS, then that's very much a partnership working thing. And I'm sure it's something we can look at. And we're not yet down the road of going into hotels to put people in, because even though you've got your physiotherapists and other people across the road, you do have to staff that building itself. It reminds me very much of what my dad went into decades ago called a convalescent home. So I'm sure we can have some discussion with our NHS partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hollyhawke?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Saying your pleasant words about me. Basically, I will be very, very quick, because as Mary said, we do work well, we work well together, we work very closely together. And so basically, virtually everything in the report, I don't know. But I'm going to ask you, this is my question, Mr Mayor, to make one little adjustment on 2.16, where you mentioned about nurses on strike for pay, on strike for pay and conditions. And I think it's very, very important that that is recognised. Thank you. And I do apologise, Mr Mayor, but I'm going to have to go. No, thank you.
Okay, will you, I accept that statement from councillor Yolanda? Okay, thank you. Councillor Pallister?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I thank the, the, do you know, do you know I've done that twice? Haven't I? You don't even look like a lady. Sorry. Right, apologies. Can I thank the cabinet member for reporting? And reading through it, you could see that you do understand the service area and the challenges and all the achievements. But it was, it was, it feels like it was written from the heart as well. It really was, and sometimes you read reports, and they have to be, have a lot of data in them. And but this one was, was definitely one that you could feel that the passion in the work that you do. So I'd also like to thank what I would call, and I'm sure you would, hidden heroes in the care sector. And I call them hidden heroes because we can see what's going on in the NHS, and I totally support the fight for better pay and working conditions. But we often don't get the same parity for our care workers. So, you know, that's why I've said the hidden heroes. I would also like to thank the cabinet member for acknowledging the dedication and passion that previous Labour cabinet member for adult and social care gave to the, to the adult and social care portfolio and many other areas that he provided support to people. And I also like to thank you for continuing that dedication and passion, which I believe you have. But my question, going straight to the question, is, going back to your report, you obviously show that there's a lot of challenges in social care and the need for integration. Well, I'm just really going to ask you if you agree that this Tory government over the last 13 years have failed to plan a long-term health and social care strategy that's fit for the future? And despite the commitment and hard work of the staff, we can no longer guarantee quality health and social care for all. And would you agree that they should hang their heads in shame for the very worrying healthcare they have left this council and country in? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Pallister. Councillor, I think there was a, well, you answered how you wish, councillor Ovens.
Thank you. I think the report deliberately didn't bring in politics as such, it was just a report on the services. It was hard-felt. And I'd also like to say about Dave Walsh, that we have, I didn't have a chance to speak on it because I garbled too much, but we have continued the recruitment and support, started with the Care College and everything. But I think, I've got to say, that my personal belief is that successive governments have failed to grasp this nettle. It's been exacerbated by pandemics and everything else. But this has been something that needed to be sorted out for decades. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ovens. Councillor Hanaway?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor Ovens. Under the heading of partnership work, could I please ask you to write to 13 Group and ask for an account of an incident that happened at Gresley Court, Saltburn last year? It was reported to me that a resident died in her accommodation, and her body was only found there around three weeks later. And then only because the other residents called the police, not because any member of staff found her there. Now, at the time this happened, in the period covered by your report last year, I wrote to Patrick Rice and asked if there was any way, you know, we could hold them to account. And he replied that we couldn't because we have nothing to do with their management of the, of the place. So it seems to me that it's, the entire incident has passed without any public comment and basically been swept under the carpet. So I thought I'd ask you if you could at least write to them and ask for their version of those events. Thank you.
Councillor Ovens?
Yes, it, it, most unfortunate incident, which in some degree has been responded to. But I'm sure we can have further discussion on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ovens. And you'll be pleased to know there's no other councillor wishing to speak. So thank you for your report this afternoon. Moving on to agenda item 10, to consider the reports. A report of the leader of the council, decisions taken under urgency provisions. Councillor Anakin?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report provides a summary of decisions that have been taken recently using urgency provisions as set out in the council's Access to Information Procedure rules and that require reporting to council. Councillor Massey, as Chair of Resources Scrutiny, has actually been consulted on this. In September 2022, government announced an extension of the Household Support Fund, which would be available for county councils and parliamentary authorities. The households in most need, particularly those who are not eligible for the support that the government has recently made available, but who are nevertheless in need. Energy bills, of course, are particularly a concern to low-income households during this period. The published delegated decision outlines how the scheme will operate in Redcar and Cleveland. Urgency provisions were applied in order to ensure the scheme was rolled out and target recipients were able to access this fund quite quickly. The funding that actually came in from central government countrywide was £421 million. Redcar and Cleveland received £1.296 million in order to do that. Seems to be a lot of money. It isn't going to go far, I'm afraid, but that was our share. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Do I have a second for that report, please? Thank you, councillor Ninety-Gill. Does anyone wish to speak in relation to that report? Doesn't appear so, so if that's the case, can I have general agreement to move that report, please, councillor? Thank you. Report is moved, councillor Anakin. The second one is reports of governance director and monitoring officer, review of proportionality and distribution of seats. Mr Newton, do you want to speak first?
Yes, it's just the usual technical calculation report, Mr Mayor. So if there's no objections to it, and it should have been circulated, we would just need a proposal and second for it to be approved. Thank you.
Do I have, anyone to move that report, please? Councillor Anakin, councillor Gallagher, thank you for seconding. Anyone wish to speak on that report? Okay, again, can I have general agreement to move the report from council? Thank you, that report is moved. Item 11 is to consider motions, and you'll be pleased to know we have no motions have been received today. Item 12 is to appoint members. I'll go through the appointments, and if there's any disagreement at the end, please indicate. Regulatory Committee, councillor Brook to fill the vacant position. Growth scrutiny improvement committee, councillor Pallister to fill the vacant position. Resources and governance scrutiny and improvement committee, councillor Turner to replace councillor Brown. South Tees Joint Health Scrutiny Committee, councillor Selvin to replace councillor Rob Clark. And TVCA overview and scrutiny committee, councillor Rob Clark to replace councillor Sue Jeffrey. Do we have general agreement in relation to those appointments? Are you going to? No. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, and you'll be pleased to know, item thirteen, we have received no questions. So that is the end of our meeting this afternoon. Thank you, councillors, for your attendance and your participation.